Okay, I'll call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees regular meeting Wednesday, September 8th, 2021. Would you please all stand and pay respects to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Noting the roll, please.
Ferrari.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
Payne.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Charles.
Here.
Curtis.
Here.
There is a forum.
Okay, I look for an approval of the agenda, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the elimination of item 9A.
Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Payne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
That was moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Noel. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Dunn.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
And Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Okay, item six, public comment on items not on the agenda. Is there any public wishing to speak?
Yes.
Come on up. John, state your name and address.
My name is John William Octoroni. I'm a resident on 980 Gibson Street, Oxford Township. I'm here to make a statement about the neighbor next door to me occupying 990 Gibson. This man is running a business, a machine shop business, okay, in a residential area. Recently, I've seen semi trucks 45 foot long. I have pictures of this, of this truck backing out onto Drainer Road blindly at 5:00 at rush hour during the week, stopping traffic eight cars deep each way. It's a hazard. You can't turn onto Gibson Street while a truck 45 foot long is occupying, wrong wheels to the curb. He's converted so much power, I don't know if he's got permits for any of the things that he's doing, but he's drawing down power to several houses, I've noticed from my neighbors talking to me, interrupting. So, the running of a machine shop is, as I mentioned before, is illegal. This is a commercial, this is a residential commercial. So, moving down to the list of things, the pickup deliveries are, I've called the police about it. Police said the next time they can't go by a video, they can go by what they see. So, the police will be getting involved shortly. Finally, you know, this is an illegal business and, you know, not making, I don't want to make threats, but this is, this needs to be shut down for various, very, very bunch of reasons. He's dumped so much grass in his backyard that it's like a mound and at first it was, I was told he was going to be a compost. So, what's the regulations on compost? It's, he's dumping grass in the alley, almost off his property. I saw it to everybody around. See, we have reason to believe, and I strongly believe that he's doing this. I think he's doing it inside, so you can't see it, but I was a former machinist. I worked for several companies over the years. I know about CNC equipment and fluids and cutting fluids and oils that mix with it and how long they last before they have to be removed and replaced with fresh stuff. You know, I don't know what he's doing with this. He originally brought four big containers that we used to use when I was in tool, that he paid companies to come to get hazardous material removed. I believe that he's dumping it into the sewer, so does my other neighbor. Again, we can't, we can't prove that because I think he's doing it from inside his, his garage, his backyard. But here's the latest picture of the newest equipment going in to this already occupied by CNC milling. Like I said, recently with what I saw the other day with the trucks, which is a constant thing anymore, most of these trucks ignore the real regulations. I gotta, I gotta say that the guy back up, because he knew he probably did belong on that street, it's a residential street, it's not for semi tractor trailers, so he backed out on the Drainer, making the situation even worse, okay, for people turning, trying to turn out of Gibson, turn onto Gibson, it's a blind corner, you got a semi truck there, you got a problem, people are going to get hurt. He also has metal stanchions that he made and put in a ditch, which the ditch on Drainer Road is not his property, it's the township's property. And it's a hazard. Somebody hits that, unfortunately, if something happens, they get killed. He's not going to pay for it, the township's going to pay for it, okay? So, and that's just to go along with, as this, since, since he moved in here, that building that is now a machine shop, part of half of his building, I have no idea how many permits he's pulled, if he's pulled any permits at all. I think he's done all the work himself and hasn't pulled a permit, I'd like to know that. But with that said, number one, it's an illegal business in a residential area. Okay? And I'm hoping that this starts the ball rolling and it actually gets, something gets done about it, because I'm prepared to go legal round if I have to. Okay? And that means being against the township for not doing their job, but that's just to be seen. Okay? That's all I have to say about the matter, and I hope to get some kind of action done about this, you know, it's really a serious matter now that these trucks are like, it's a daily thing. Okay? And to my knowledge, he has other businesses up on M24, he's moved around with, with other people. So, I don't think he's, I don't think he's doing things right at all. In fact, I know he's not doing anything, and he doesn't care, because he's been talked to by several neighbors right behind me, people across the street from me, people next door to me. So, if he would look into this, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much for sharing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other public here to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, the fire department. Anything to speak about the fire department?
Just to let everybody know, we did hire another employee, Chris Shear. We've got clearances on him Friday night at the last minute, so he did start yesterday morning, so I'll be great in front of you at October meeting, beginning of this, sorry, in front of everybody at the township board in October. And also to let everybody know, October 3rd is our open house that we had every year. Hopefully everything goes okay and we can still be able to carry him.
October 3rd?
Yes.
I have a question for you Pete, I don't think any other board members do, but where are we in the hiring status of the five employees?
That brings us up to four, so we still have one open position.
Do you have candidates for that?
Nothing yet. How do you have any applications?
Thank you. Any other questions for the fire department from the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to item eight, Sharp Engineering Report. Hello, Jim.
Good evening, board, or you guys, and ladies, sorry. Just finishing up a lot of the development projects around the township with the residential development, the enclaves and the banners, so those are wrapping up. I think you're going to see something coming back to you soon, the resurrection of the M24 gateway signs. I've been in touch with Mr. Young about this a little bit. I know well from the Oxford signs, basically, we're going to put one down at the Orion Township, Oxford Township border there, and one up on the north end, up by Davison Lake Road, so I think Mike's packaging everything together and can be coming to you with a presentation for that in the next month. And we had that meeting with some of the business owners on the west side of M24 recently to discuss the extension of the sanitary sewer from the 18-inch sanitary sewer that we installed with the M24 project to, you know, take that up to the Brad Dewey area out there. I think Jack's got something else that he's going to bring up a little bit later on that CJ's been working on in regards to this, but yeah, it's, we're looking at some options, possibly a special assessment for those property owners, kind of in the discussion phase right now, but we are moving forward to try to extend that 18-inch sewer up the road and give service to the Brad Dewey area as well as the commercial developments that are along M24 there. Other than that, any questions?
Any questions for Engineer Sharp? Seeing none, thank you, Jim. You might stay up there because item 9B, which is 9A now, is the development of the 3.25 acre parcel for the fire department on M24.
I don't know if the fire department's going to take the lead on this, man.
Who's got the R on this, Jim?
I don't know. Kurt, are you looking there?
Whatever you like.
Do you want to show the one? Well, we had a couple of concept plans that we threw out there. This is through the 3.25 acres that was donated by Levy, correct? That was on M24, just north of Excelsior Drive there. The fire department is looking not to do a station, I believe, at this time, more just a, an area where we would think about putting a well in or something so that we can have firefighting capabilities up in the northern part of the township, help them with their ISO ratings, and I should really be letting them talk about this, but there were a couple of concepts. This was the first one, again, just kind of square to the property lines, and again, it's just conceptual in nature. The building that you see there is just similar to station number two, so over on Drainer Road, we just, again, are just starting to talk about this. If you go to the next slide, though. Similar type, you know, layout, circulation all the way around a future building, and what our goal is right now, I believe, is just to look into the costs, get the land balanced, put in maybe a well up there. Again, we don't know the capacity of the well, we're talking about maybe an underground tank. We're looking at a lot of different options right now, but again, just to have an area for firefighting purposes up in the northern part of the township, we have to put in a crossover across M24 there so that you can go northbound so that the fire trucks can access it quickly and not have to go do any of the Michigan turnarounds. Again, I don't know what else you want me to say at this point, we're just kind of developing some plans and keep you guys in the loop with what's going on.
Trustee Charles has a question.
Explain the difference between the two drawings.
So, the first one that Mr. Wright had up there, we just drew up, drew the building and the parking lot and everything so that was, I guess, parallel with the north and south property lines, but as you can see, it puts the building and the, more importantly, the driveway kind of at a skewed angle to M24, if you were coming out, so they're going to be pulling out and then have to really crink their neck, you know, to see if there's vehicles coming, coming southbound there. If you go to the second drawing, Kurt, it's a 90-degree angle, the driveways are both 90-degree angles to, to M24, so it'd be a little bit easier access, probably a little bit quicker access, and provides a little bit of additional land in the future for any expansions. Again, talking with Assistant Chief Majestic, you know, we don't, we don't have any plans with the building right, right now, let alone any, you know, expansions in the future, but it would be there in case we did, you know, grow to, to need something up there. Did that answer your question, kind of?
Yes, it did. I have another one.
Ah, go ahead.
So, to the south end, are there plans for some barriers there, visual or sound or anything like that, that the neighbors could sell there where the tree line is?
Again, we haven't gotten that far into the development stage, and that is all industrial property there. I don't know exactly what that business is.
It's the old foam seal plant.
Is that the foam seal plant?
I have a question next, too.
So, that's some industrial.
My question is, are those foam tanks still being utilized?
They're gone.
They're gone, no. Thank you.
Trustee Dunn, anyone?
Trustee Dunn.
I'm glad this was on the agenda because in our last meeting, we made, we made a motion to basically take $50,000 out of the fire department budget for this. I'd like to discuss this with the board to see, you know, if in fact they would like to keep it this way, or 50/50 out of the general fund, come out of the general fund, just so we can get an idea of where we want to go with this.
I can start the discussion on that. Chief Pete, Assistant Chief Matt, do you have the money?
I'm going to sit to the side on this part.
We do have a substantial fund balance at the moment, but we are sitting down right now as part of what we got, the mileage increase we just got, and part of that was in there too, was to buy a new replacement engine. Starting price for a replacement engine right now is around $650,000 to $700,000 by the time we get done. That's about a year out from now before we would actually receive it. So, again, I'm not taking that much money out of that fund balance, starts coming down pretty close. Buy then also next year, the year after, another ambulance that needs to be purchased, and then after that, another tanker, so again, you know, I'm completely in line, so either it comes from there or it comes from someplace else, if we're talking to $50,000. I would prefer it could come from the township's general fund or someplace that would be appreciated.
Bill, you started the conversation, what do you, what do you think?
I was in agreement that it should come out of the township general fund, and reading the mileage for fire protection services that we passed at four, it was four and a half miles. Part of the, the reasons for it was for operations and capital expenses for fire protection, emergency medical service, and advanced life support service, which require rollback. So, we're asking the people to put this money up so we can build buildings.
Buy fire trucks and buses.
So, now I've kind of flipped and I think that possibly it should probably come out of the fire, fire department. It was on your side.
Appreciate that.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yeah, I've always, it's a fire department expense. I've always thought it should come out of the fire department. If we're looking for that many different improvements to the system, to the fire department for these different vehicles, I mean, the vehicles were bought from a bond. I mean, maybe time to look at that avenue, another bond, if there's that many that are going bad, because the bond, you know.
The bond was floated back in 2001.
By what?
By equipment and by build two fire stations.
Correct.
So, that was back technically 2002. That's when we got both new stations, and we purchased roughly seven fire trucks at that time. So, again, now we're reaching, you know, next year, we're 20 years old on those vehicles right now. So, again, you know, we've got to start replacing them somehow, we're handling it. So, aid, if it's a bond, we're going to go for that much money to replace them, or as I'm trying to get them out of the budget right now, working within our means without jumping way overboard, I'm trying to tickle that problem. So, I'm willing to, you know, aid to do the trucks that are in that dollar, but I'm not, I'm not ready to jump into a building at this start with that much money.
Trustee Payne.
I wouldn't say let's do a bond yet, because so far, the chief has, that the department's been able to make the purchases out of their fund balances, out of their current budget, then I wouldn't float a bond until such time that we came to that we absolutely couldn't afford trucks. And if, as long as we can afford the trucks, why would we float a bond?
Okay. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Trustee Charles?
What about the American Rescue Plan money, is there any way to fit that in this?
Minutes for water.
We are having that, I'll answer that question. There are four categories currently still being discussed on exploding those out at Tamar avenues. Currently, there is an option to improve your water, and creatively, I'm asking people right now if a hydrant is a bond or a ARPA money funded expenditure. The question is out, but there's a million questions, I, 250 communities that want that ARP money, to spend it on something. This sounds like a water well, and it sounds like water, so I'm waiting for somebody to tell me yes. So, we are looking into that. Right now, we don't have an answer.
And the answer would come from who?
It would be the people at the state who set the guidelines as to, actually, the federal government.
Federal government set the guidelines.
Yeah, the state is the ones working on tweaking them, and through Rosemary Bear, I've asked that we get a updated list on what the feds are going to allow the monies to be spent on, and this was one of the expenditures that I talked about with her.
That's for forgiveness.
No, because once you do a bad thing with that money, you are open for a full line audit, and they go back as deep into your pockets as they can get it. Treasurer Ferrari.
I'm suggesting to Jack, before we spend that money, do exactly what he's doing. Ask him, does this qualify? Get something from them saying, yes, it qualifies. Staple it, go do it.
Yeah.
Then we might think qualifies, Jack submits it, sorry, no thank you.
Yeah, so to answer Trustee Charles' question, Treasurer Ferrari and I have been discussing this back and forth, I've been dealing with Senator Bear and all the way up through Dave Coulter, through anybody that'll listen, can we use ARP money for water well? Because it looks like we can, but I want somebody to tell me we can, so that I don't get audited in a year and they start going through every nook and cranny. So, yeah, we're looking at it.
To your point there, I agree, and I didn't quite read the item, which apparently isn't as much as you, it sounds like it would qualify, and I believe there's a process for asking first, right, besides calling our state senator?
All that is still in limbo. No one's received their money yet.
Right.
And while we have been audited, we have yet to be approved. I looked yesterday, we're not on the approved list yet. The list is updated every day through the municipalities if you're approved or not. We're audited, we're fine, but now they have to approve us, and then by the end of the month, they'll start allocating monies. Hopefully by the end of the month, they will have expanded the criteria for spending the money.
So, to wrap it up then, as far as this $50,000 that Trustee Dunn brought up, we have some time before that gets allocated, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're not going to do anything right now?
No. Trustee Noel, do you have any comment?
The fire station was, is a phased approach, and we asked Sharp Engineering to look at phases on that as well as costs from our last meeting, we have a committee on that. And the $50,000 is supposed to cover the upfront cost of doing that. $50,000 has nothing to do with the well. That is one of the top things that we're looking at to put firefighting, increase our firefighting capabilities in our northern quadrant, which would help our ISO standard for residents. So, that's where, you know, we're, we're taking baby steps on this. We're not looking at putting a whole new fire station in next year, the year after next. We're looking possibly to, to work with the land, to develop the land as far as accessibility, maybe working on 24, maybe put a well up there to fill the tankers. So, what we need to do is continue the $50,000 to move forward with this preliminary work, and then as simultaneously as other grants or things come available, or allocations come available, then we can apply it accordingly.
Okay. Clerk Wright, do you have some comment?
As far as this is going here, is this the, like a layout of Fire Station 2 existing?
Yes. Engineer Sharp basically took, just a square basically, which resembles Station 2, and put that under as in the exact same interior design. Nothing is planned at this point, but it's just you've got to have something to work from, from a footprint, that's what occupies the space of what the station would occupy in the property. So, you can plan around it as far as parking and driveway access.
No rough cost estimate of what it takes to finalize the whole project?
No.
But it's not prohibitive now to put that wall down, potentially lower ISO rates, right?
Correct. Assistant Chief, let me ask a second, I saw both looking at it right, for right now, as far as seeing a building on that site, I mean, we're a minimum of five to 10 years out on that, depending again on growth, what happens up on that end. But at the meantime, you know, I have a need today, we have no water at all on the north end, zero. So, I guess, you know, something, I could have a fill source right there that I can fill tankers with, and be able to, you know, fill there and haul water to wherever we need to. Ideally, it would be a well that produces close to 500,000, 500 gallons a minute, which would be the same as the wells that we spec for Savannah Ridge, where they did the subdivision out there, and the same as we just did out at North Open Woods, same type of well. Those costs were approximately, what we talked to him, was around $36,000, I believe it was, when they put those in.
So, could the committee come back in October with estimates for us to approve? What's up to the engineer?
Trustee Dunn had another comment.
He looks at the cost estimates the other side.
All right, we got too many conversations going on. Clerk Wright?
I just wanted to speed the process, I'll pick you up your well, find out what the cost is, and then, you know, potentially before you run, he'll have that in and ready to go.
Trustee Dunn?
I'm going to call on Jim here in a minute. Pete, at what point would this well influence what the people pay on the north end for their insurance? Would it be immediately? Would it?
As soon as we get the, the water source available to us, yes, then I can call ISO and say, come, you know, take a look at that, we have a well there right now. And again, it only goes out for so far. I mean, is it the same as putting a fire hall in there for everything, you know, like up in section one and section two up there? It doesn't affect them because we're, they're still, you know, they're still outside of five miles from a fire hall. So, that, you know, effect of them right at the moment's not going to help anything, but everybody else up in that northern area gets credit for the water.
At the committee meeting, we asked Jim, our engineer, to come up with the phasing of, in phasing, we're talking about the cost, you know, estimated cost associated with that, so the board will have an idea of, you know, what our plan is, but it's all up to Jim when he gets it to us. Someone mentioned October, I don't know.
Yeah, that's doable.
So, the intent of, anybody else's drawing, if there's something like this, we're putting that there, then basically we can look at it and say, okay, if we get a well guy come in, you know, looking at that drawing, you know, will that well fit in this piece of project, it's not going to affect anything in the future, when we actually do the driveway and do the building, you know, the well's out of the way, it's in the right position for everything. So, that's why we kind of got to have a footprint there that we're looking from to, to design to perform.
Any other questions or concerns?
Is this board satisfied with it coming out, 50,000 coming out of the fire program?
Well.
That's the motion on the board.
Is there, is, I didn't hear a motion, but I wasn't done discussing something. If you want to make a motion for discussion, we can do that, or I can make some comments here. Number one, all avenues have not stopped, we're pulling all stops out to try to get monies for this. Number one, I'm reaching out, it is water, it's, it, it sounds like it's a positive use of the avenue money, number one. Number two, our grants and communications manager is vehemently seeking grants to supply fire safety to a portion of our township, and researching grants to find out if we can get some money for the build or assisted build of this watering system, a parking lot turnaround area, or something like that. What I'm hearing is, we need money right now to engineer just the basic simple thing, to get permits to get a road emergency cross in there, to drill a well, to place the well in an, in an area that will allow us to build a future station, not by putting it right in the middle of the property and then blocking it off, but it sounds like we need about $50,000 to engineer. But it sounds like we need about $50,000 to engineer, permit, and drill a well. Bill's question is, is the township board okay with taking this money out of the fire fund, or out of the general fund? And to do either one would take a motion to allow approximately $50,000 to go towards this endeavor.
We've already got a motion in place to take it out of the fire fund already, Craig. It's already approved.
Okay, so we have a motion already approved to take it out of the fire fund. And the question is, does everybody satisfied with that?
If there's no motion, the previous motion stands.
Yes. I don't hear another motion, so currently, if Jim moves forward, he's taking the $50,000 out of the fire budget.
I think it's from my invoice, right?
No, your invoice should include the drilling of the well, the paving of the lot, the permit price for the road work.
We're gonna get all that for 50, huh?
Yeah. You said it. You said you'll cut us an invoice.
Make sure you turn voices over to Pete, Matt's like him with you.
So as it stands right now, the committee that's in charge is still working forward to provide a water source to that area to lower the ISO rating, using the $50,000 out of the fire fund. Everybody, right? Okay. Let's see, is any more questions regarding the development of the 3.25 acres? Hearing none, let's move on to item 10A. I'll take this one, it's the hiring of a building official. Board members, I've been in a lot of discussion with Attorney Rentrup. We've had several instances where it's proven that we need to have a building official that can be accountable for all practices, processes, and work done in the building department. Currently, there's $1.7 million in the building and site fund that can only, or the building fund, that can only be used for building activities such as a building official. Currently, the building official for the Charter Township is treated as an independent contractor. We swore him in prior to a change in the MCL in 2012, and Tom Rutter continues to act as a contractual building official for the Charter Township of Oxford, performing operations that include building inspections and certifications for buildings to be built. While the rest of this stuff that should be being done in the building department by a building official is being left undone. Based on legal advice, I'm requesting the township board approve to hire a building official as an employee, according to MCL, to the Charter Township of Oxford. This building official will be responsible for running the building department, supervising the employees of the building department. We can then have the zoning administrator reduce the days, number of days they're working, saving some money there. We can have him bring us up to speed on processes that are out of shape, and get our records back into wiggle perspective. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
I move to approve the job description of the new building official, zoning administrator, and the hiring of a full-time building official for the Charter Township of Oxford. Supervisor Jaco Curtis is authorized to recruit and interview candidates, hire the building official for the Charter Township of Oxford. The selected candidate shall be offered an annual salary between $75,000 and $95,000, depending upon experience and qualifications. They shall receive all the benefits afforded to the full-time Charter Township of Oxford full-time employees.
A second for discussion. Okay, moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Noel. Discussion, yes, sir.
So if it's supposed to go through, would Mr. Berger's employment be done?
No.
So we'd have two building inspectors.
You could.
Well, we would.
Why?
Well, you're hiring one and you're keeping him, that's two, right? One plus one.
Well, a building official, a building official's job is more than just building inspections. Tom would continue to do building inspections. The building official would learn from Tom some of the things that he's doing, and he would perform process improvements, filing and handling documents that are being stored for the township, and working and supervising the employees to improve the process at the building counter. Eventually, Mr. Berger is going to retire full-time. Tom works part-time right now, and I've discussed this at length with Tom. Tom has an end date, his sunset is sooner than later. And with the opportunity we have to correct some deficiencies and have this new official learn from Tom, Tom would be the one doing the inspections still. And in Tom's absence, when we hire outside officials to do inspections, this building official could do those inspections. So yes, we would have two officials that are eligible to do building inspections, but currently, we would just retain Tom to do that while the other functions were improved, enhanced, and fixed. Yes, sir, Mr. Dunn?
$1.7 million fund balance, that's a lot of money. It seems like we're charging too much for permits. I'd like to see somebody look at reducing that cost. I mean, I don't wanna hear where the other committees, that's what they're charging. We've got a lot of money sitting in that fund. I think we owe the people to take a look at reducing the permit cost. I have more questions, but I'll let Joe.
Yes, sir, Joe.
I know right now the auditor's working with Susan McCullough to properly allocate some of that fund balance back from the building department to the general fund for years that people had their salaries allocated from general fund when they were doing building department work. So you're gonna see that balance go down quite a bit, too. Because our auditor totally recommends that we should have had that money coming out of the building permit fund, or folks are paid out of general fund. So the permit fees is basically building permit, you got a free ride, general fund paid for. For the employees that are doing that work, they should have come out of building permit, not general fund. So right now, Susan's working right on that.
When you say that person, who, who would that be, Joe?
People that were before that did that function.
Which function, Joe?
Did the building functions.
So was Patty Durden?
Yep.
Barb Walkus? Barb Walkus, no, she was, she was totally general fund, and she was.
Anna Cushion?
Anna Cushion?
Um, who else was it?
Rebecca Runden.
Yeah, Rebecca Runden.
And that's 2006.
I know they're looking into all that stuff now.
Yes, sir, Trustee Noel. We're getting a little sidetracked. I'd like to get back to the motion that was brought up. The job description. Excuse me?
I don't think it's sidetracked, it has to do with what we're gonna be talking about.
Okay. All right, John, go ahead, you had a question.
The job description's very detailed. You're asking a great deal out of this building official zoning administrator. He is not going to just walk in on a Monday and take this over. He's gonna have to work with the people that we have here to become acclimated, not only with our zoning ordinances, but how we do business with Oxford. I know that the independent contractors that we hire are folks that may be retiring sooner than some other folks within the township. So I think we need to look out for what's in the future. If it's in the future plans to bring someone on board such as this, I think it's a good idea. The question I have, well, a couple of questions I have to run through my mind is that we currently have a consulting firm that we hired to come in to do a lot of our work. Do you foresee that to be reduced, eliminated? Jack?
What, right now, we have our zoning administrator coming in. We increased him to two days because the workload increased. With the advent of a building official, after trained and working with our zoning ordinances and administration, we could eliminate one of the days. That would save some of the money.
So you feel that we would still have him here for one day possibly?
Yes, possibly one day. And in the near future, wean him right down?
Before my time, many years ago, we, my understanding, I may be wrong on this, but my understanding was, is that the township took responsibilities for a lot of this and made some errors, and there were some lawsuits driven from some of those errors. Do, are we putting ourselves back in that arena where we would be at risk using a zoning official that worked for the, reported here at the township?
You are at risk right now by not having a building official and doing the things that we're doing. We are at risk. So we have a zoning administrator here and no building official, we're at risk. If we hire a building official and get rid of the zoning administrator, we'll still be at risk. We're always at risk.
So we're, so we're improving our position then?
I believe so.
Okay.
I didn't have a question.
Bill? Question?
Didn't have a question.
Well, my opinion is, I don't think it's needed. It was recommended to me before to hire a building official, wasn't required then, and it's not required now. When you talk about a building official doing filing, I would just assume you see a part-time person come in 20 hours a week. There's gotta be somebody out there with some pretty good credentials, with a couple of kids, would love to come in from 10 to 2, and do the filing, and do the follow-up, and, you know, develop spreadsheets to follow up on stuff. That person would be able to, to take care of lunches for the other people in that area. So I'm not gonna, you know, hold my breath and go into court and start yelling and screaming, but that's just my view on it. Whatever happens, happens.
Any other questions, concerns, discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Charles?
No.
Trustee Dunn?
No.
Trustee Payne?
Yeah.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, item 10B, I'm glad we picked that. It's approval of short-term disability insurance policy. Board members, right now, all full-time employees other than elected officials are given one month of extended illness. They're up to 30 days of extended illness wages for every month they work. So if an employee works here for 30 months, you end up with 30 days of extended wage, what they call disability. You get 30 days of pay to go on disability. What we discussed with the elected officials and some of the employees was, we did a compensation analysis around the communities, and we looked at what we got. Currently, right now, the supervisors of the individuals are deemed to be the ones that call out, yes, it is okay to be ill, and that is an approved illness day, making us doctors, making us PAs or nurse assistants, and qualifying your time off based on a note. We looked at that, and we changed it to say, if you're gonna be off for a long time, you have to take your extended, your personal days, your vacation and all that. And that didn't work out real well. So what we did was, we looked into a short-term disability program through Ryan Root, our agent, and we came up with a plan. And the plan is, in your packet, the Kansas City Life Plan, which allocates 60% of your wages, up to $1,500 maximum weekly benefit, for 26 weeks at 60%. So currently, if an employee worked for 30 months and got their 30 days extended illness, the township's obligation is $6,900, one employee. The total is $32,000, pretty close. What it does is, it allows the employee to be sick at a doctor's recommended time off, taking the township's responsibility off of their shoulders. And number two, it gives a better benefit to the employee. So currently, right now, our extended illness wage obligation, and you know, during a pandemic, everybody could have been sick, if they all would have went off for 30 days, we'd have paid out $32,000. The cost of the short-term life insurance policy is per year for all our employees, So at 26 weeks, that employee would end up with $18,000 that a doctor recommended them off sick. Takes away our obligation for the township. It eliminates the extended wage obligation, and we are proposing to eliminate eight hours from the personal days, allowing up to 40 hours instead of 48. So we're trying to fund short-term disability and make us competitive in the marketplace. We're trying to take away the obligation to the township for illness extended wage obligations and be more competitive in our hiring. Are there any questions?
I like the reduction of the liability on the township side of that. Or is it gonna be up to other people to make that decision?
Right. Joe, Treasurer Ferrari?
Well, I couldn't agree with you more often. It's so difficult. We were given a letter saying, I might have been exposed to hacks from the doctors, I wanna use my 30 days. Is it right? Is it wrong? I don't know. This way, they go to an outside source, say, okay, this is why I think I need it. And they prove it to that party, congratulations, you get it. We're out of the medical business. I move to approve the option two.
Yes, sir.
So what's on the actual experience?
Pardon me?
What has been the actual experience?
The actual experience so far?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What has it then? Have you had people go 30 days?
Yes. I'm getting older. I'm an older employee working in the township. I'm susceptible to more than 30 days off many times. The benefit to the employee on this is, as I get older, I need a knee replacement. I'm out for 14 weeks. Instead of getting 30 days paid, my doctor gives me 14 weeks off, I collect from the insurance agent. Actually, if an employee was off for 60 days, they would only get 30 days paid, giving them 50% pay. Now, what happens, if that employee goes off six months later, they get six days of pay.
So what you were saying, we had actual experience?
We have actual experience, yes.
And the quid pro quo was reducing this 30-day bank? That's what we're gaining in terms of, we're not gonna be offering that in the future, right?
Right. Correct. Any other questions? Margie, Bill, Curtis, John?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this just for the direct township employees, the parks and, this way down, cover parks and everything?
This is just for direct township employees.
All right.
Yes, sir, Treasurer Ferrari.
I move to approve option two quote from Kansas City Life, provide short-term disability insurance coverage to full-time Charter Township Oxford employees for the annual amount of $3,972.60. This will replace the current 30-day short-term internal policy within the township personal policy.
I'll second that. Okay, we're motion by Treasurer Ferrari, and a second by trustee Charles? Okay, questions? Yes, sir, trustee Dunn?
We took something off the agenda, is that why it was taken off?
Yes.
So we can include that in the?
If, if this motion passed, and the next motion, we have some corrections to the employee gain. So it got ahead of us, we.
I just curious what was gonna happen.
Yes.
And Bill, I added to this motion that Jacob presented, so people don't think they get both.
Right.
They realize one's gonna replace that, and we're just not there yet.
Okay.
Excuse me, can I just say something in case it hasn't occurred to anybody? Because I double-checked with this, too, that it is clear in the policy that employees are not paid out for this bank that's going away.
That is correct.
There's no monetary. There's no monetary?
There, they, the 30 days is not owed to anybody. It will not be paid out. It just goes away. And this short-term disability policy falls, it just covers right over the top of it.
Quid pro quo?
Yes, big words, quid pro quo.
Oh, sorry. So, so until this, until this policy is signed, what happens in the interim to employees?
We still have, my opinion is we sell the current one, but they know this is gonna be replaced once October comes, we get the new thing ready to go.
Why can't it take place right now?
I guess it can.
You, you don't have a policy issued yet. The insurance company has to approve it too, if this is part of an open contract.
Because the motion says it, pretty much effective tomorrow. We work both them side by side, Jack, to do that. Effort.
Can you retrograde policy?
We were told by Ryan that this policy would go into effect immediately as soon as it was executed by the township. I'm trying to see, there is no?
A waiting period?
There's, I don't see a waiting period on here. Let me clarify the waiting period on here with Ryan to determine if we have to keep them both until it's active, we will act accordingly. If it goes into effect immediately upon signing the papers, the 30 days goes away. But God forbid somebody gets sick in the next two, three days, then we have to honor that commitment. Do we need to change our motion?
Put a contingency?
Well, it's pretty clear, because it says it comes to effect, and the goal is to replace this one. So you got both ends covered.
I think so.
He's an agent, not an underwriter.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Payne?
Yeah.
Trustee Dunn?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Okay, item 10E.
We can wait for this one.
Oh, I, I love this one. The step system and wage scale discussion. Board members sent out in an email after the packet was mailed out, and I hope you all got it. If not, we have a copy of it, we put up on the screen. Here's the current step system and grade system. And this has been used for several years. If you move down to the next one, we met in committee and talked about using something more along these lines. And why these lines versus forming everybody in a box is all employees, if they're administrative assistants, whether they're in the building department, whether they're under the supervisor, treasurer, clerk, they're all paid the same amount of money roughly. The clerk cannot evaluate their employees and give an employee a better raise than the treasurer can give a bigger raise for an employee doing better. You get an employee that works elections, they're exempt. You can pay them a bigger salary than overtime. You can pay them a bigger salary for a better job, cost savings, evaluation. You can move it anywhere on the scale versus tying people to a step. This was proposed, we talked about it, and I just want, I put the numbers in there of the salaries just to show you where everybody's at. Now, the Oxford substation assistant is paid more as an administrative assistant than the other three, but the other three are in the same wage. Deputy supervisor, or deputy clerk, and deputy treasurer, and the grants and communication manager, they're all making the same amount of money. I can't, I, as the supervisor of the communications and grants manager, can't give him a bigger raise because we stop at the step system at the top, at that salary. Although he's gotten us, since his tenure here, close to $400,000 in grant monies and gifts to the township, you can't reward him anymore. You can't reward him differently than the deputy below them, because if you give them all 3%, boom, the step went up. This way, you have a floating minimum and a maximum. We don't pay anybody less than $35,000 in the salary, and I don't think we'll ever get to 120 in my tenure. So we put the scale way out, and you can see that you can move this anywhere on there to pay somebody. All you're doing is putting them in a classification and allowing the individual department head to evaluate the employee and apply a recognition award or a evaluation raise if, if they do good. And this is what our team that was assigned to do, the recommendation came to us to use this. So out on the floor for comments. Yes, Trustee Charles?
Recognition award, is that like a one-time bonus?
Well, I use that word and I, I, you know, you recognize an employee for doing a good job, so you would pay it in the salary.
So you'd increase the salary?
It's a merit increase.
Merit.
Don't say bonus.
Yeah, I don't wanna say, I'm sorry, I said recognition award. You're awarding somebody, you're recognizing somebody by increasing their salary differently than another employee.
Is there an option for bonuses, like a one-time bonus? You said no, you're shaking your head. Excuse me, but I don't, is there some rule we can?
Do we do that? I, I think it is illegal, Bill. I think Bill is right. It was against, I, I'd have to dig that up, but it, it was always told it was illegal.
I mean, you mentioned grants for the thousand bucks. It seems that it might be an incentive for somebody to say, hey, I get four million, I get a bigger piece of the pie, as opposed to, I get the same thing based on, what do I do, work or not?
Bonuses and donations by a township to an entity or an employee, I believe, are not conducive to public administration. Treasurer Ferrari?
Jack, Curtis and I discussed this, and I understand where Jack's coming from, but I'm still believing the step system, how it functions. Well, I think it's outdated. I think we need to get rid of steps one and two. I like the way it's classified when it first came up back in the 90s. It came up as a way to classify employees based on job responsibilities and what's expected. That's why I like the classifications of it all. It is outdated, I'm screwed with that. I'd rather not throw the whole thing away, rather update what we have. That's my opinion.
Joe, what's, what do you mean by outdated?
Wages, there's no way you're gonna hire somebody as an admin assistant of 35, 463. I mean, step number we currently have, it just, it's not useful. And I think the way Jack's been using it's been perfect. That's how it should be used. You have a range. So even if we stay in the scale, Jack's like goes between two and six, depending on what he feels the person's qualifications are.
Trustee Dunn?
Problem with this, the way it is right now, Rob, is the, the deputies have been at that same step for?
Ever.
For 10 years?
About 17 years.
There are always?
I was counting, huh?
There's always a step nine, like Bill's saying, for 17 years. What happens is, every year, you have to take nine and make it eight, and make a new nine, and then take one off and make it all readjusted.
But the school system is doing it now.
Yeah. Yes, regarding Secretary Susan?
Can I speak as an employer? Would you like me to go to the podium?
Go to the podium.
Podium, in the ground.
Yeah, let's go to the podium.
While she's going to the podium, I have another question for my veteran.
Yes.
Can you also reduce someone's compensation if they're not coming up to standards? I mean, we keep talking racing, but what about the person that starts upgrading and falters?
I wouldn't want to try it. I wouldn't want to try it.
Probably easier to release the employee and take the relationship between the employee and the charter township of Oxford and break that relationship.
Yes, exactly. I'm in the lobby.
Susan McCullough, Lopier, Michigan. Just to give you some perspective with the wage and step scale from an employee's perspective, because all the employees are tied to one another by their position, you might have an employee who is excellent, will never make more than your worst employee. And that, when you, you have, you have an annual evaluation, it doesn't mean anything. Because I will never get more than what the worst person is. So I, I think it's been pretty clear that I will give anything to this township, but it is very disheartening to know that I'm only as good as the worst.
And that was my statement about evaluations. I can't evaluate an employee at a deputy level and pay them more. Can you pay them yet less? You might as well release the relationship between you and the township. Trustee Dunn?
Why couldn't you pay them more?
It's never been done.
No, what I'm saying is, I agree with Joe about the steps. It needs to be adjusted. But there's room in there to give somebody a step increase, you know, one of the deputies a step increase and the other one not. That rewards that person. It kind of, we can do that all along with all those people. That if somebody's doing a good job, give them a step increase, because that's about 4% when you go from one to the other. You don't have to do them all at once. All the assistants, all the deputies, you do it as a board performance.
But, well, I don't mean but, but that spend the attention forever, but it's never done.
But you guys have been locked in at number nine, and there was no, no way to increase one without the other, except by cost of living.
And what we do is we chop number one off and make number two, number one, and then we make number nine, number eight, and we add another number nine. And then you pay your deputies all the same and the grants manager all the same.
Assuming they move up.
And assuming they move up, you give them all 3% cost of living raise, they all move up. Now you give them?
They'd already be moved up because they're all step nine, and if you're making step nine a specific amount, they'd already all move up.
Well, see, that's why I think it seems to be, we need to add 10, 11, 12, 13.
And what I, what our committee recommended was, the other chart is have a minimum and a maximum, and wherever you fall on that chart, that's where you've earned your wages. You don't take steps to my earnings. You take a salary. You work good, you work hard, you work efficiently, you offer cost savings, you bring reduction in office supplies. And you can give, you can move them anywhere on that scale you want to move them to. It doesn't tie them to a step. Yes, Curtis? Treasury, I'm sorry, Clerk Wright?
The reason why I believe this wage scale will work better, it gives the employee more incentive than what you have now, and you're just, you're just treating everybody the same, and the duties are statistically required, but there are items that aren't even mentioned that some of the employees may merit more pay than others, based upon, based upon leverage.
I, I agree that we need to give our employees better incentive than the step system. I agree that it's outmotive and that we need to address it. And with that in mind, I move to have the Employee Review Committee, we just built on, and myself, and I'd like to add John Noel to review the wages for the wage and step, the, the step program for the employees, and also to review the elected official's wages, and have something prepared for the November meeting.
I'll support it for discussion.
I say motion by Trustee Payne, second by Trustee Dunn, for discussion. Questions?
Which one are we going to do, Margie? Are we gonna do the step system?
This, and the elected official.
Almost like everything.
Let's do this again. Which one are we gonna do? We're gonna do this one plus the step system?
Well, no, we're not doing this one. We're doing, reviewing the step system and coming up with a recommendation for the board.
Okay, so what we'll have to do then is we'll have to move on what the committee assignment was. The committee assignment was for the elected officials to come up with something new. So the first thing I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, is we have to vote on our recommendation, whether four members like it or four members don't.
I, this board needs to tell this committee which one to use. They haven't determined that yet.
We have determined it in our committee that we were assigned to do. The recommendation out of that committee was that second new approved step.
My point is, the board hasn't acted on it.
That's what I just said. We have to act on the recommendation of the committee that was assigned to do this before we make a motion to throw out the baby with the bath wash.
But I think this encompasses it all.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes, Trustee Payne?
I guess maybe I missed something. When, when did we vote on having the three elected officials meet at the meeting?
What meeting was it?
Down the committee.
I believe it was April.
No, May, it was May.
It was May?
The three elected officials were directed to come up with a new system.
We, we, we were assigned this task in May. The three elected officials to come up with a recommendation for a new pay scale.
Okay.
Margie, Trustee Payne and Trustee Dunn were then assigned to the committee to do the evaluation and proposed raises for 2022 at a different meeting.
All right, and we'll do that when we get the evaluation.
I'd like to rescind my motion and my support for that motion.
Rescind my motion.
Can you rescind the motion or do you have to vote? Okay, I have those motions rescinded. So right now, we have to have two motions. One, to either approve or deny the recommended scale. If you put that up on the board for me, please. I'd take a motion to approve or deny whatever somebody wants to move on.
I make a motion that we continue with this 2021 step system, but have Supervisor Curtis, Trustee Treasurer Ferrari, Clerk Wright, come back with a new proposed wages step system that more meets our needs. Like sticks for this, redoing this. The committee working unanimous.
When are you gonna be working on that? Wait, we need to, okay, talk.
Okay, that's not bad support.
I'll tell you. Trustee, or Treasurer Ferrari wants this to go back to committee and work on it again.
The steps.
The steps, correct. So what we have to do is, there's a recommendation by the committee assigned to do this, to review the step and grade system and come up with something new. We have a recommendation. We need a, I believe we need a motion to either accept the recommendation or to deny the recommendation. That clears the committee of their responsibility. Okay, Treasurer, or Clerk Wright?
You have a motion on the floor?
That died.
They rescinded.
No support.
Oh, Treasurer.
My died.
No support?
There's no support.
No support. So I think housekeeping, do we want to accept the recommendation of the committee assigned to improve this great pay scale? I look for a motion.
Just need to hold the same.
Yes, sir, Clerk Wright?
Oh, see, I don't know how to phrase this, but I'll phrase it anyway. I'll move to approve the proposed wage scale as presented in the September 8, 2021 Oxford Township Board of Trustees meeting packet, and include that as an attachment to the minutes.
Could you might add to it and replaces the current step system? So we can both find it, please.
All right.
It's like the dead.
And we can get this, Secretary McCullough, to replace the existing grade and step system.
Moved by Clerk Wright, seconded by Supervisor Curtis. Roll call, please. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
No.
Clerk Wright? Yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Trustee Dunn?
No.
Trustee Payne?
Yeah.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the recommendation of this committee was not taken. It was turned down. Uh, step and step system and wage scale discussion, how do we want to do this? We have a budget meeting on September 22nd. We have our evaluations due on September 30th.
Before budget.
Before budget, so they're due on the 21st. So how do we do this? Clerk Wright?
They're actually going to be due probably the 16th of September because you have to have that information in the board day for the township board to plug in most proposed salaries and wages for the budget.
So we need to assign a committee to come up with the proposed pay, um, wage scale that can be approved at the December, or I'm sorry, September 22nd Township Board Meeting. Who do we look for a committee? You want me to assign them?
Since the scale's still in place until this whole thing gets done, we got evaluations coming due. I'd like to act on this right now to keep us going with our evaluations and still do that co- site.
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adjust the 2021 step system, which was adopted September 9th, 2020, to add a new step N that increases all the wages by 4%.
I'll support for discussion.
We have a motion by treasurer Ferrari. We have a second by trustee Dunn for discussion. Questions, trustee Dunn?
Why can't we do 10, 11, 12?
We could, this gets us over the hump in case the committee.
Why can't we do 10, 11, 12?
Because we like revisiting this every year.
Because, you know, between each one of those steps, uh, 3% to 4%. It's pretty easy to just kind of add 3% to 4% for the next, whatever.
10 years.
Well, I just do one year and then we get a.
Because I love the committee wanting to read if they didn't like it. Whoever, it's going to be the new committee. But I can always rescind my motion and try another one.
I rescind my support.
I rescind my motion.
Okay, we have a clean floor.
I'll make a motion to, uh, adjust the 2021 step system, which was adopted September 9th, 2020, create new steps 10, 11, and 12 with the wages increasing 4% for each step from step nine.
We have a motion by treasurer Ferrari.
10, 11, 12.
Well, I don't, I'll support the discussion again. Why wouldn't we just do the next 10?
Well, it buys us time in case we want to revisit.
But I mean, if you're not going to use, I would get the ones before, just fricking do it out for 10 years. You can always change it with a motion.
Because we got evaluations still coming soon. This gets us some guidance. This gets us through.
We want some numbers, Joe. Give us 10 years of numbers.
Mr. Curtis? This is, would this take care of our problem? No.
Band-aid it.
It band-aids it for this budget period.
Gets us through the hump to get some more study.
Well, if we're going to band-aid it, let's band-aid it and go the next step.
And that's what I think of it.
It's what we're proposing.
That's what he did. Good question to, Mr. Curtis. Yes, trustee Charles. This will be effective when January 1st.
Immediately. We've had evaluations.
We have evaluations, budgets to work on the step system.
I heard Margie say January and then I heard you say immediately. What is it?
They get, the proposed increases are effective in January. The step system goes into place immediately so that evaluations can be done and proposed step raises would be given at this time for budget. Yes?
If you only add step 10, 11, 12 and get rid of steps 1, 2, and 3.
Can.
You're still locking an employee in. I can only ever get a 4% raise because you only go up one step a year. Nobody has ever gone up more than one step a year. So you're still just locking me into less than cost of living. Why, I don't understand the marriage to this system. It's archaic and it's inefficient. If, if our administrative assistant, let's say they're at, they're at grade 3, step 2. All your administrative assistants are going to, if, if any go up, they're going to go up one step. They're all going to. And you can say, well, it's going to be merit-based, but it isn't. Look at the last 20 years. If one gets it, the other gets it. And it has nothing to do with how good of a job I do. It's easy for you because you don't have to put a whole lot of thought into it. But it's, I don't know.
This is, this is why, uh, the committee came up with getting rid of the steps. Explicitly from that. And what I hear is you may have a different idea and there's a motion on the floor to increase the steps 9, 10, 11, 12, is that what it was?
Oh, 10, 11, 12.
10, 11, 12.
Just add three more steps.
To answer the question, Susan, you'll get that with the vote. I'll call the vote if there are no more questions. Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
No.
Clerk Wright? No. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And supervisor Dunn, sir, Curtis, excuse me? No.
But I should add, we still want a committee to explore this.
Now.
This buys us to 2022.
Currently, the commit, this buys us to 2022. Now currently, there is a committee out there to do salary evaluations based on evaluations of the employee and relate them to a step system raise or not. And that committee is trustee Dunn and trustee Payne.
But I just clarify that we're not going to recommend a step increase. That would be done by their boss.
Your, the boss will, the department head will recommend, okay, this employee gets a raise, this one doesn't. This, they all get a raise. And the salary evaluation committee is charged with reviewing the evaluations and justifying the rate that they were given a raise for.
And the department may choose to go up two steps.
That's exactly right.
Another question.
Yes, trustee Charles.
So what we are doing right now is push this back to the higher of year or till another recommendation from the committee?
We're pushing this out until, uh, 2025?
No, 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 I'm not going to the chart.
Well, you've got 12 steps out there and every year we change it. We take one off and add one. Now we don't have to add one. Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. What we're doing now is we're moving it out to step 12. That's three more years out, in a sense. In the interim, we can make recommendations to form another committee to change this. We have elected to, we have voted to not take the recommendation of the current committee to change it to this. We've elected to do this, moving the steps out to 12. At any time, Margie, trustee Payne, you could come in and say, I think we ought to look at this again. But we were trying to get through the 2022 budgeting process and fulfill the requirements of the state, having our budget and our wage evaluations done in the third quarter. That's why we're forcing ourselves here to do this. So at any time, you can come to this board with a recommendation to form a committee to change this base standard.
And, Mr. Curtis? So we can change this March of this coming year?
Yes, you can.
But that's, that's, that's my question, by the way, was we're not locked into this for another 12 months. We can change it in March.
You can change it next week.
You can change it next one. You can change it at the 22nd September meeting. Tonight, all we're doing is taking the step out to step 12 and we're going to evaluate our employees and put them in the.
Right, because that's what Mr. Ferrari was saying. This is a band-aid until we resolve this issue.
Now, trustee Payne, you had a comment? Treasurer Ferrari?
That is correct. This kind of buys us time and maybe there's an option C that gives us everybody kind of thinking about. They might say, let's try this. This allows Jack to continue with his budget stuff. Allows supervisors that have step nines, draw for either step 10, 11, or 12 for their employees or either depending on their evaluations come out. It allows them to get through this hump. Once we've got 2022 budgets, we come take a look at it again.
Right. So, uh, November, what is our meeting, the 10th?
November.
Oh, October. You can make a motion in October's meeting to revise this again. But we would hold it for the 2022 budget evaluations and payroll. That's the way I took the motion and the vote.
First of my understanding, I'd say is that this is to buy us some time to reevaluate the systems to, uh, here, here, but we could implement something completely different at any point.
Picture. This is done so we can do the evaluations and apply any proposed salary increases for the employees by September 30th so that we can do the budget and respond to the state and the county, uh, by the deadline. After we do that and we have the salary employee evaluation team say, yes, you're moving to a step nine and January 1, they will get this money, you can change this at any time. Clerk Wright?
Yeah, I'm wondering, you know, on this chart, we have lines five and six that are blank. Why do we even need the titles and the graded steps? Why don't you, why don't you open that up to allow the employee to basically get a grade and step regardless if it's 5, 2, or 3, 6, or 7, 7?
That would be a recommendation of the committee that we just had. And that, Margie, if you want to do that, you could take all those off the left-hand side there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
I mean, that would be, I don't know, is it, we already have a motion that's passed that we're going to add 10, 11, and 12 for this year.
It buys us time.
The next time somebody wants to work on this, they can come in and recommend taking all those names off the left and you can put anybody in any step grade that you hire.
Well, I, and I'm on board with getting rid of the steps too, to be quite honest with you. I'm on board with that. I just, you know, and something needs to be done that you, you know how I felt. You and I served on the committee for a long time. It does need to be addressed.
Yes.
I just didn't personally like the one that you committed.
Okay, well, I know that you are going to be assigned to the next one. It wasn't me personally, but I won't.
Your committee personally, I, I, no, me personally, I said.
Yes, I, no offense taken, I, I felt it though.
Say it like it is.
Yeah, it came right over the top of your head and landed on you. No, uh, we will come back and revisit this, uh, after our budget period.
Okay, I, I would appreciate that. It would be nice if we could work on this not during budget, budget time when we have other things going on. And, you know, maybe the beginning of the year rather than budget time.
Love to see our trustees working on these things.
Guys, we're talking about wage and steps. This is still adopted. We got evaluations coming up.
Right.
We got to adjust the scale. Is it called like 5% Jack?
5.4%.
So we want to adjust this. So somebody does pull up a stat, they don't lose money. So while this is in effect for 2022, you want to adjust this.
You will have our recommendation on that.
Well, that's a part of.
Or I don't know, I mean, in the past, we, we made a recommendation.
Well, does the committee make a recommendation on the calls?
How did that work, Margie?
We used to make, you and I used to make the recommendation to the board. And the board would see everything.
On the call, I get a stat.
Last year, we had the COVID bonus and no one got steps.
That's correct. And there was an inflation rate.
The, yes, with, yes, exactly. Now, in 2019, we gave them all like a 3% hostility.
Yes.
Three years ago, we did move a couple of people in steps based on their evaluations.
Not the deputies because they were at the top, but.
Deputies are always going to make what the worst deputy makes.
Correct.
I have a question.
Yes.
This is, this is not a personal question, this is, uh, procedural. You said that last year there was the, the COVID bonus and then what else?
I went to 2019 and said that everybody got a 3% cost of living raise.
Yeah, in 19, so yeah, in 20, there was no cost of living.
There was no cost of.
Yeah, see, I, when I.
That's a Margie statement.
What I said, Susan, was, but there was an increase in inflation for cost of living. Not to you, but, but in the world. The only way we earn the company.
And then also, you're talking about taking those things away on the left?
That's, that's at another time, not now.
But I, I want to point this out. You have an employee classification that's not even there. You have a communications and grants manager position that's not even on the wage and step.
That's on the old one. If you look at the new one, uh, it was on there because we took that. We, we did put the grants manager, communications and grants manager on the, on the new one. We put them on, you could see where we added everybody in there. But it'll have to be taken into consideration when that committee changes this to something that.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about because you're not using that. You're going to use this step system, yeah, but that's not what was approved. But that position, just pointing out that position doesn't exist.
Right.
On the wage and step scale.
Right. It will. What, what was in the motion when we hired the communications and grants manager was they would be paid the same as a deputy.
Right.
Now, that's what we're going to do this year. According to this chart.
Yeah, but I just wanted to make sure that it's added on the wage and step scale because it's not there. If you're going to keep the titles.
Yeah, I tried to add it, but nobody liked the committee's recommendation. Well, three people did.
I know.
The fellow he says, something to the pigeons, something to the statue.
You know what? And the statue's still there.
I have a question.
Yes, trustee Dunn?
At what point are we going to be, I see something in here for some, uh, wage increases. When are we going to be voting on wage increases?
For.
Elected?
That's coming next.
Oh, it's going to be coming next?
It's part of this discussion, part of this discussion, step and wage scale discussion. So treasurer Ferrari had a discussion he wanted to bring forward to the group?
Remember board members back in August, but trustee Noel wasn't going to be there. We wanted a full board to discuss it. The package that came about the wage issues and wage scales for the three electors. I don't know if you guys brought that with you?
Yeah.
That was, was, was discussed last time or when it discussed this time, that's the, how the board wants to handle that. Uh, we had people doing it, I think, I'd sit in my office looking at like communities. We have that attached and that's the recommendation that, that we've come up with for the three positions.
Mr. Ferrari? You say like communities, I always get confused when you guys say like community.
I can show it to you right here. Oxford Township total registered voters, 17,500. We have an SEV of over a billion dollars in 2021. The next community is over a billion dollars and has like population registered voters. Uh, the real property, they have $200 million more in real property, but it's close. It's like, our populations are alike, our SEV values are alike. Uh, the voter, registered voters are, registered voters are like. That's what we call by like. And then you go down and you look, okay, Oxford Township supervisor, he makes 82,000. Hamburg Township makes 69,200. But if you look down one line or several lines, you see that they have a manager superintendent that makes $90,000. So the job that this supervisor does, they have a superintendent manager doing for an additional 90,000. So that position, if the supervisor in Oxford Township was doing everything that the superintendent and the manager of Hamburg Township did and you paid him the same, it'd be 159,000. You go over to another like community, Milford Township. Uh, let's just use Del, Delhi. If you go over to Delhi, they're about a billion dollars. If you go over to Delhi, they're about a billion dollars in, uh, population is 20,000, 25,000, it's close to ours.
This is 20, uh, 20, what, census, 2010?
2010 census.
Well, we had the 2020 bill.
You didn't have it when all this work was being done.
Okay.
And if you go down, and you go down farther, you'll see that, uh, stop right there, I think, I'm going to go over here. Yeah, you gotta, okay, the top line is, let's just use the supervisor. Slide over to Delhi. See, he only makes, the supervisor there makes $25,000 a year. But if you look down, their manager gets paid 127,000 a year, doing the same job. So the supervisor in Delhi is only, runs the township board meeting and does the budget. They have an assessor, they have everything else in, in employment, but the manager does all the work.
What does the clerk in township pay the clerk and treasurer on the manager form of government?
In, in Delhi?
Let me slide over.
Slide over, second line is clerk. Clerk, clerk deputy, this is attached. This clerk's name is 74,580, and the clerk makes.
The deputy is 2500, and the assistant is 55 to 66.
Yeah.
And the treasurer is part-time. Doesn't the manager have to oversee both of those?
No, because the treasurer is overseeing, it makes 25,000, they have a finance manager that makes 62 to 74,000. If you slide back over all the way to the left, and it's the assistant to the treasurer that makes 75,000 a year. So when we're doing like, okay, we only have a supervisor, we don't have a manager superintendent. We have a clerk, we don't have, we have a treasurer, we don't have a finance manager or an assistant to the treasurer that makes.
We just thought of a building administrator.
Yes.
Is that part of this equation there, too, or not?
No, if you go down, oh, page two, I don't know if it's in there, hold it, what was that one? Communications grants manager. Now you go down into those townships, and you'll see, page two, uh, it has building officials in there.
I didn't see the grant, Mr. Wright's a grant manager, too. Do they have that?
Some do. Smart ones do. He's the assistant to the manager, that one makes, uh, 97,000 a year. Uh, they're, they're out there, they're on the chart, this is not the complete chart. This is only five columns of the chart.
Hey, one thing I noticed down there, too, you mentioned Milford, I might have said this earlier, that number is an error, because that includes the village of Milford.
No, because. What number?
We have a village, too.
You have 16,000. No, ours includes the township. Our township in the 2020 census was 18,774, Milford was 10,257 in the 2020. I realize it's a 2010 census you showed here, but just looking at the numbers today, and Joe, you're in the Semcog community, I got this from the Semcog website.
Okay. That's how, that's how the numbers came about, that Joe's talking about on the next, on that slide.
I just have a hard time comparing apples to apples.
It's very hard.
It's never going to be a complete comparison, Rod, you gotta do the best you can.
That's, that's the only thing we have to do, the best you can.
Depending what the board wants to do.
Well, I said, those numbers will happen.
So go to the chart, that Treasurer Ferrari, um, the wage scales.
I guess I have a comment, here's the.
So let's get it up here first, Bill.
Okay, someone over there?
No, I'm looking at the one that he.
Was proposed?
Proposed, yes.
Right, that's it, there.
Okay, Bill, let her loose, wait, let's get down, let's move up a little bit.
All right.
You have the floor.
So we're talking right now about the elected officials?
The three elected officials, yes.
Well, I think whoever's put this in had a lot of hoots, but a lot of audacity, uh, to go through a, an election last eight months ago, knowing how much they were going to make per year, the, uh, all the hospitalization, whatever, they knew exactly what they were going to get. And again, they have a lot of hoots, going to come back eight months later and ask for an 18% raise.
Excuse me, they have a lot of what?
Hoots, that's audacity.
Oh, that's, okay.
It's not, it's not, it's not the other, it's not the pair.
I had to sound to be clear, I didn't.
No, it's not the twins. But, uh, I think it's, you know, if you don't think you're not, if you don't think you're making enough, you should have thought about that back then. As a matter of fact, you could do it right now, you could quit, and I guarantee you, if you quit, there'll be 10 people out the door, you know, wanting your job, because you're five minutes from work, you're recession-proof, you got great insurance, you got retirement, and I just think you have a lot of audacity to ask for an 18% raise.
Any other board members have any comments?
Well, one comment I got, well, go ahead, Mr. Wright, you're first.
Is that, is that directed to all three positions, or just, uh? Let's just make a statement. I know two of them are 18%, and the other's probably 10 or whatever, I don't.
Trustee Charles, are you going to comment?
The message of Mr. Ferrari has this committee on there with, uh, Jeff Curtis, Margie Payne, and Rod Charles, what's the connection there, because there was no committee that I was part of?
Oh, that was different, that was kind of redoing the wage scale system, and that didn't go anywhere, because it was Dick Haffey, Jim.
So what do you want to do with this Treasurer Ferrari?
I don't know what the board wants to do with it. Am I talking about it now, or am I talking about it next year?
Budget.
Yes, I'm sorry, trustee Payne. I move to have Bill Dunn, John Nold, and Margie Payne review the wages for the elected officials and prepare a recommendation for the November regular board meeting.
I'll support that.
Wow, trustee Charles got the second out, right after trustee Payne got the motion out. Bill, you almost were there.
I'll catch you later.
He's older.
I have a motion on the floor, and I have a discussion. Clerk Wright?
Uh, our budget is to be approved once, like, in the September meeting, so what number are we plugging in for that, this existing wage?
We'll see right after this, you'll see right after this vote. I'm taking this vote and this motion, and I'm making a comment, tell me if I'm wrong, is that this motion eliminates this proposal, and it will assign it to the committee of trustee Payne, trustee Dunn, and trustee Nold to do the wage scale for 2022.
No, because for the three elects.
For the three elects.
The wage cover 2020, it was only trustee.
Trustee Dunn, you had your hand up.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Would you, boy, can you turn back?
Trustee, the Treasurer Ferrari, I'll come back to you.
I think trustee Nold comes in on the elects, but he's not in on the regular.
Right.
Correct.
So he comes in for the elects, but he's not on for the employees.
I just feel like it's kind of a big deal.
I understand.
Hey, I don't want to be part of it.
So, help me, we're, we're going to be doing the employees plus the elects on our committee?
You two are.
And we're going to have that for the 21st meeting?
The meeting for November.
Oh, November, we already got this year's taken care of.
You know, as far as the 21st, can't we just, let's assume we're going to give a 5% raise?
We already, we already got that motion passed, we're just gonna, we're going to do the evaluations, we're going to apply it to 9, 10, 11, and 12, if they deserve it, and now what you're going to do is trustee, the motion was trustee Payne, trustee Dunn, and trustee Nold will work on these three elected official wages, and trustee Payne and trustee Dunn will work on the evaluations and the wage increases for 2022 for the hourly people. That, that's what you applied, right, Margie? That's what, that's what this.
That's correct.
Yeah.
I have one more question.
Yes.
If we're going to be working on the step system, and we're going to be taking it out three years, right?
Mm-hmm.
What number are we going to use?
I mean, you already said, 4, 4% each step.
Where does Captain Jack will probably go tomorrow, have him know work on this, we got three steps, done.
Oh, what numbers are we going to start with? If we're going to give everybody a suit, everybody's going to get a percent rate for cost of living, so we change all the numbers, and whether it's 2%, 5%, we need kind of an idea in order to have those numbers come out.
No, we just, we just take what we have.
That's to you, Margie.
We, we, I got this.
Okay, Margie's got it, that's why I made her chair.
That's why I respect her judgment when it comes to this. We've done this for four years.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so what is the motion on the floor is to have trustee Payne, trustee Dunn, and trustee Nold work on the wages of the three elected officials for 2022.
And have it at our November meeting.
Did I hear that?
You have to give us two months to work on that.
Okay.
Did you say November?
Yes.
Is that what the motion, that's, that's what the motion was?
Yes.
I'll call the rule if there are no more questions. Supervisor Curtis? Yes. Clerk Wright, no. Treasurer Ferrari? Yes. Trustee Dunn? Yes. Trustee Payne? Yes. Trustee Nold? Yes. Trustee Charles? Yes. Motion carries. Items removed from consent agenda for, for action for items, uh, nothing has been removed. Public comment, is there any public comment?
One quick notice, I'm not sure everybody's got it, um, M.DOT sent out an email late this afternoon that tomorrow morning, um, for the rest of the week, Burdick Street and Washington Street will both be down to one lane, go all directions, so they can go in, grind off their colored walkway to make them all the exact same color, because when they did, part of it was one color, they did the other part of it with another color, now they're going in to try to make them all one color. It's a little effective tomorrow.
Just saying.
We're not putting anything out there. I mean, I can call CJ to have him throw it.
We're not doing it.
I don't have any comment.
Any other public comment? We're embarrassed, Bill, this is four times, and he's been wrong for six times. Let the village be wrong.
Well, good news on that, to get the cost.
Let's see. Public comments, any other public comments? Seeing none? Board of trustee comments, I'm going to start with trustee Charles this time.
Well, a couple of quick updates, we had our DDA event downtown this past week, the Deal No Deal, or that game show is called, I never watched it, but we participated, that was successful, I see our chief Schultz is there, Mr. Curtis is there, Bill Dunn, I saw Bill wandering around, I participated, so that was fun, we had a lot of people there, it was very, I would say, successful, so I'm pretty excited about that, that event. Oxford Addison Youth, our meeting, we, uh, I thought that was interesting how the village police chief has been, worked with some of the kids in the area in Oxford Addison, bringing awards to their homes, which I guess having a police car show up at your house isn't always positively received, but in this case it was. Um, and the last thing, I leave this for Mr. Wright, we talked about our gypsy moth adventure, I will say that we were intending to go to the county meeting this past week, uh, good call, we didn't go, because I understand there was 1,000 protesters there, and we might still be waiting in line to speak if we had, but Curtis can fill us in later on about, uh, our intentions for the next one.
That's it. Okay, trustee Nold?
I just appreciate all the work that we're doing for the potential fire, uh, station coverage out in the north part of the village, uh, excuse me, the township.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, clerk Wright?
To add to trustee Charles' comment about gypsy moths, we are planning right now to get on the September 29th agenda for the board commissioners of Open County, to discuss the infestation of gypsy moths and the possibility of getting some funding for the program, and possibly resurrecting the program that was in place back in the mid-'90s and probably after that. Also, I talked to a representative from Bloomfield Township today, and they are experiencing some of the same infestation, and not that it's good, but it does show that the spread of gypsy moths is just in the northern forum counties of Open County. So I sent her some information, they have information on the website, I'm going to check that out to see what they do for their process, but we want to get this going, in case if there's going to be, uh, special assessment consideration, because it's a three or four month process, and we just want to be more proactive, and be able to maybe suppress the moths better than what we're doing in 2021, potentially get some management funds from the county to offset the costs for the township to actually do the spreading. Um, the other comment is that we're going to be experiencing redistricting for election primaries, and with that happening, Oxford Township, to my understanding, will be getting a new district number, and when that happens, we are mandated to mail out everybody that's registered voter ID cards. We have, as of the last count, 17,610 registered voters in Oxford Township slash Oxford Village, and based on that, we've done some, Susan's done some preliminary investigation on cost versus doing, doing it, uh, third party or in-house. Right now, we're going to go in third party because of various reasons for manpower, equipment failure, equipment usage, toner replacement, card stock purchasing, but that's going to be an additional, probably, upwards of $10,000 to value a, a board ID card. So it's, um, figure that's about $2,100 to print the stock, and 50 cents per card board, postcard to mail, so you can do the math, and you're going to come pretty close to that number, so just wanted to give you that heads up also. Uh, we are now in the process of receiving this ballot applications, draft and tease for the November 2nd election, the, the library bond proposals, so we're expecting to get the, we have to have the ballots in by the 18th of September, and they'll be going out probably at the end of September to the boards. So stay tuned, if you're an absentee voter, you'll be getting your ballot momentarily, hopefully you don't spoil it.
Okay, um, trustee Payne?
Okay, first of all, I sincerely hope that we, that someone addresses Mr. Aciloni's concern regarding the.
He'll speak to that.
Um, shot in his neighbor's house. And then also, on what Mr. Sharp said regarding the two new signs we're getting, I'm excited about that, that I'd like to see this township add more than just two signs to, to, to show people where we are, if nothing more than at least Lakeville Road, um, and maybe Big Lake Road or something, I, you know, Lakeville Road, a lot of people travel, Seymour Lake Road.
I got, I got.
So, um, that, and that's all, that's all I have.
One more, Treasurer Ferrari?
For our October meeting, please make sure employee handbook commitments are on that agenda, that encompass the new short-term disability, disability issue, I don't want that to slip, make sure that comes on our October meeting, so we can button that up and put that behind us.
That's it?
That's all I have.
Okay, for me, quickly, all budgets have been received, uh, from OCTV, the library, Parks and Rec, um, I do not have one from Pollyant Trail, nor do I know if I need one or not from Pollyant Trail. If it comes.
Are you asking or writing in the opinion?
I'm, I'd like to know, because I'm going to submit a budget without it if it doesn't come.
In the past, we've never, in the past, we've never submitted, submitted a budget, and the only effect on the general fund budget will be the contribution to, to the Pollyant Trail, but if this board would like a budget, it'll be in the next package.
Okay, it's my opinion that if we're giving general fund budget to a committee, Pollyant Trail, they should tell this committee, they should tell this board what they're spending that money on. That's just my opinion.
That's fine? No, that would be completed, you said you had a note?
I don't get nota.
Notice you thought the same thing.
Well, you'll get one.
Okay, then I need nota also, I'll follow up on that tomorrow. CJ is working on grants to offset sewer costs for the proposed North Sewer District, uh, that we're talking about, a consent agreement, a consent special assessment district, uh, he's also working on alternative funding for the gypsy moth eradication. Um, the sign issue that I heard, the, the, the previous proposal I'm very intimate with, we were going to put two new signs at North and South, and share a sign with Orion on the South, Metamora was not interested on the North, and when we got done, we would take the refurbished, the Boy Scout refurbished signs that are hidden in the woods, and use those on the eastbound entrance and the west. entrance and the west-bound entrance on Lakeville Road and Seymour Lake Road. I wanted to answer your question. And the last but not least, 990 Gibson, the individual that came in today had an nauseating conversation regarding 990 Gibson running a business. Charlie Farley has been advised of that, we have an open complaint on that home, but you have to have proof, you have to have, what sort I'm looking for, cop, probable cause, and we are trying to find all of those. The road commission of Oakland County has been called, I sent them a text to talk to Mike Young earlier today to remove the plates from the road. The WRC has been notified of a possible, we don't know if it's sanitary sewer or storm sewer, injection of material that doesn't belong in there, and DTE will be called tomorrow to determine if there is a power surge in that area caused by that building. But there is an open complaint on his house, the gentleman wanted to come and get it on the record tonight, but he talked to me, Charlie's been sick with, he's out, he'll be back tomorrow, he's three weeks out with a negative test, so he'll be back tomorrow and investigating it to its fullest. Our trustee Payne, I didn't mean to be so rude to cut you off, and I apologize for that, we were talking over each other, and I apologize. But other than that, that's about all I have.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
Motion by trustee Dunn, seconded by Treasurer Ferrari. All those in favor signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, hearing none, we're finished.